Half a day, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is not called to order. Today is Thursday, thirteen, twenty twenty one, and the time is two o'clock. If everybody could please put their, their zoom on mute, thank you. All right. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Thursday, May sixth, and again on Tuesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty one. And the notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on the same days. The Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's AV staff and my committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. The host will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. The first item and only item on our agenda today is bill number one thirty-one dash thirty-six LS. It is introduced by Senator Jose Piruterlaii, Senator Mary Camacho Torres, and Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. It's an act to transfer law number one zero one two six dash one, consisting of eleven thousand nine two nine plus or minus square meters in the municipality of Dedidu to the Guam Regional Transit Authority, GRTA, for the purpose of developing and constructing a park and ride facility. I'd like to acknowledge at the presence today of my colleagues, beginning with Senator Jose Piruterlaii, Senator Mary Torres, Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Telo Titigui. Thank you, senators, for being here today. We're also joined in our hearing today by Mayor Melissa Savares from Dedidu, Sisus Massey Mayor, for joining us. Mayor Anthony Chargaloff of Kinahahan, thank you, Mayor, for joining us. And also some municipal planning council members and Director of Department of Land Management, Mr. Joe Borja, and the Director of Guam Regional Transit Authority, Mr. Celestin Babauta. Thank you both for being here, and everyone else who has come to testify. So before we hear from those who are here to testify, I would like to ask the sponsors, Senator Piruterlaii, to please introduce the bill.
First off, thank you very much, Madam Chair and Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to all my colleagues and all of you in attendance. Bill number one thirty-one dash thirty-six LS was introduced at the request of the author and is designed to give jurisdiction of eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight-plus square meter property in Harmon to the Guam Regional Transit Authority for the purpose of constructing a park and ride facility. The Federal Transit Authority has awarded GRTA with nine point two million dollars federal grant to construct this building. And GRT has been making strides towards improving our island mass transit system. This is another bridge that needs to be crossed to deliver our residents a world-class transit system and reduce our residents' reliance on expensive fuel and driving to work on a daily basis and increasing the wear and tear of our roads. And let me just say that, you know, the Department of Land Management, and I want to thank the Director, Joe, the Director of Land Management, for helping us out in getting the partial piece of property over in Dedidu. And also, I want to thank the Mayor of Dedidu and Aleu Sablan for being with us and also with the manager of Matt Transit Authority. And we're going to go through with this, and hopefully, we can resolve everything, whatever issues that we have. And I want to thank Mary Torres, my Vice Chair, for this. And thank you very much, Mary, for sharing your thoughts and making sure that we go through with this project. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Turlaii. We will now call on those who have signed up to testify. So we have the Board Chair of the Guam Regional Transit Authority, Mr. Alehu Sablan, and we also have the Executive Manager of the Guam Regional Transit Authority, Mr. Celestin Babauta. So I would invite the Board Chair to begin, if he is willing.
Okay. Can you hear me, Speaker?
Yes, I can.
Madam Speaker, okay.
Are you able to turn on your video?
Ah, yes, yes, let me turn that on. There you go. Madam Speaker?
Yes, please, please do, yes.
Okay. Half a day, Madam Speaker and honorable senators. My name is Alehu Sablan, Chairman of the Guam Regional Transit Authority's Board of Directors. On behalf of my fellow board members, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for allowing me to testify in support of bill one thirty-one dash thirty-six. The legislation will transfer the property to GRTA to build a park and ride facility. First, in the island of Guam, the park and ride facility will certainly contribute to a healthy environment for the residents of the villages and military bases. Furthermore, bill one thirty-one dash thirty-six is vital in affording the people of Jigo, Dedidu, Anderson Air Force Base, and the Camp Ben Blas Marine Base that is soon to be open with their transportation needs. In March twenty twenty, GRTA submitted a grant application for a competitive grant dubbed Bus and Bus Facilities Grant Program under the Federal Transit Administration. The hard work that the GRTA staff dedicated in formulating the grant application paid tremendous dividends. Of the two hundred and eighty-two applicants, ninety-six received awards. GRTA received notification in August twenty twenty that it is one of the ninety-six and thus received nine point five million. Without doubt, the award was a huge success. It will allow GRTA to purchase buses that are sorely needed to transport residents of the two most populated villages in Guam. The funds will be used to build a park and ride facility, purchase eight electric buses, eight electric cars, technology transportation management system, TMS, and construct charging stations. The proposed park and ride facility is the first in the island of Guam, and it will be a tremendous value in providing for a healthy environment. Residents will be able to park their vehicles at the facility, get on a bus, and drop off at their destinations. By parking their cars there, the villagers and base personnel are helping reduce road congestion, pollution, save monies for gas and maintenance of their vehicles, and boost economic growth for Guam. Without doubt, using the funds to procure buses and cars will assist in providing reliable and safe transportation. The title of the grant application is "The Road to Education." The first bus route will go from Dedidu to GCC, GWHS, UOG, and FDMS. That's Guam Community College, George Washington High School, University of Guam, and Father Bruenius Memorial School. Therefore, students, faculty, staff, and workers from Jigo, Dedidu, Anderson Air Force Base, and Ben Blas Marine Base can count on getting to school or work and quality of life destinations on time, all of the time. Madam Speaker and honorable senators, I have stated key points relative to my testimony. The diligence of Team GRTA in putting together its grant application paid enormous dividends with a grand award of nine point five million. Moreover, our future leaders of Guam will be able to fulfill their education dreams with a reliable and safe transportation. They will undoubtedly shape our island into a sustainable and healthy place to live. In closing, I would like again once, thank, once again, thank all of you for giving me an opportunity to testify in support of bill one thirty-one thirty-six dash thirty-six. Additionally, I am humbly asking all of the senators of the thirty-six Guam Legislature to vote in favor of the bill. Sinceramente, Alehu Sablan, Chairman, Guam Regional Transportation Agency Board of Directors. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, Sisus Massey.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, I just wanted, Aleu, Mr. Sablan, is that nine point five million or nine point two million? Because you're talking about three hundred thousand more. I thought it's nine point two million.
Uh, I believe it, my understanding is it is nine point five, maybe. Uh, Mr., right? That's correct, Mr. Babauta, that's correct, nine point five?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, here from Mr. Babauta now. Manager, GRTA, Mr. Babauta.
Half a day, Madam Speaker and honorable senators. My name is Celestin Kus Babauta, Executive Manager of the Guam Regional Transit Authority. I appear before this august body of government with sincere respect and gratitude for affording me the opportunity to testify to support of bill one thirty-one dash thirty-six. The intent of the bill was to transfer government of Guam property to the Guam Regional Transit Authority. A little over two years ago, Governor Lou Young-Guerrero appointed me to lead and manage the Guam Regional Transit Authority. I am thankful to the governor and lieutenant governor for their confidence in me. Moreover, I want to thank GRTA Board Chairman Alehu Sablan, Vice Chairman David Arans, Director Mayor Kevin Sutriku, Director Bernard Wiman, and Director Mayor Tony Chargaloff for their wholehearted support of GRTA and the park and ride facility project. I would be remiss if I do not recognize Senator Peter Turlaii and Senator Mary Torres, Chairman and Vice Chairman respectively in the Committee of Public Transit, for their untiring support of GRTA. Madam Speaker and honorable senators, GRTA is over ten years old. However, when I reported to work, GRTA was faced with tremendous challenges. Seven out of twenty-three buses were operational. One point two million dollars awarded to GRTA in two thousand and eleven remain unspent at that time and to be returned back to the Federal Transit Administration. For your information, we are going to be using that one point two million dollars because we were able to convince the Federal Transit Administration to extend the life of the grant. One million in FTA funds to buy buses were programmed, but no action done. GRTA was paying a transit contractor fifty-two dollars an hour for paratransit and fifty-one dollars an hour for fixed route, sixteen hours a day, six days a week. GRTA was providing the buses, vans, paying for gas, maintenance, tires, oil, and other fuel at the same time. GRTA was leasing contractor vehicles at seventy-four dollars an hour, sixteen hours a day, six days a week, whenever GRTA insured the vehicles for fixed routes and paratransit services. There were no plans to design or build its facility. Riders are not being picked up on time or not picked up at all. Madam Speaker and senators, here we are two years later with the following achievements. GRTA was awarded two competitive grants, nine point five million dollars and one point nine million dollars with twenty percent matching. The grant applications were very challenging because my team and I have never done competitive grant applications in the past. Designing a GRTA facility, although progress is low because the property is, to build the facility, remain cluttered with severed vehicles and metallic items. It's thirty percent design complete. Eighteen buses and vans are operational now. We're no longer leasing contractor vehicles. We bought thirteen buses and tend to be delivered June-July timeframe. Three have already been delivered. We've activated the One Call One Click Technology Transportation Management System. The technology is helping us lead and manage transit operations daily. We have plans to do the park and ride facility. We're purchasing electric buses and cars. We're pursuing a feasibility study with the University of Guam, an Uber route match to determine if mobility-on-demand transit operations is viable in Guam. We've saved government of Guam over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for taking over paratransit services. GRTA is no longer denying persons with disabilities rights and are being picked up on time. Madam Speaker and honorable senators, nonetheless, more must be done to make sure that GRTA provides a reliable and safe transit system for the people of Guam. For this reason, we're kindly requesting the support of the thirty-six Guam Legislature to pass bill one thirty-one dash thirty-six so that we can build a park and ride facility in the village of Dedidu. Funding worth for the facility will come out of the nine point five million dollars that GRTA was awarded competitively. In addition to the facility, we will be, we will be purchasing electric cars, electric buses. We're constructing charging stations. We're procuring technology transportation management system. Plus, there will be a design and to build a park and ride information center so the riders will have bathrooms, vending machines, et cetera. Furthermore, GRTA has developed a plan for the first bus route departing the facility. Because the title of the grant application is "Road to Education," the initial bus route would be from Dedidu to Guam Community College, George Washington High School, University of Guam, Father Bruenius Memorial High School. The students, faculty, school staff, workers, persons with disabilities will therefore have dependable and environmentally clean transportation to inform the learning institutions. The buses will be running at least every thirty minutes so that the riders will be able to arrive at their destinations on time. Madam Speaker and senators, with the park and ride and electric bus vehicles, GRTA is unquestionably contributing to the people of Guam sustainable and environmentally friendly vehicles. Other dividends that will be garnered from this project are as follows. Healthy environment, reduction in traffic congestion, residents won't have to buy high-priced gasoline, reduce their maintenance costs, workers, students who have reliable transportation to work and school, definitely reduce boat repairs, help Guam's economy, and improve the quality of life of Guamanians and visitors. Madam Speaker and honorable senators, Team GRTA is continuing to work hard to provide the people of Guam with a transit system that they can count on to get them to their destinations on time, all of the time. Bill one thirty-one dash thirty-six is crucial in improving the island's transit system. The benefits of the park and bike facility are huge. Therefore, I am humbly seeking the support of the thirty-six Guam Legislature to vote in favor of bill one thirty-one dash thirty-six. Respectfully so, Babauta, Executive Manager, GRTA, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Babauta. We'd now hear from the Director of the Department of Land Management, Mr. Joe Borja.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Speaker. And in addition to all of that, that Executive Manager Babauta mentioned, I don't know if he mentioned that in addition to all that, GRTA receives land behind Tumon DTA for their maintenance facility. And that's just a recent, in the last couple of years. Secondly, just a slight correction to Senator Piruterlaii. Land Management did not give the land to GRTA. Only the Legislature can give the land to GRTA. Land Management merely identified a very, very positive location for that. And with having said that, the Department of Land Management fully supports the intent of the bill to transfer this property to the GRTA. For those of you that may not be familiar with the site, if I could have, if I could be allowed to, to share screen. Okay, so everybody can see that that is the actual survey map of the property. And it's actually across the street from an access eastman from Harmon Loop Elementary School. And if you can see the property there, it's a long narrow piece of property. And normally, lots are not created like this because survey protocols actually limits the shape of lots to a one-to-three ratio. That means it should not be longer three times than it is wide one time. This lot is about a hundred and twenty feet wide and about one thousand one hundred and feet long. And it was actually a remainder portion when Harmon Elementary School opted to provide an eastman through that property. Now, that eastman that you see, that long line that you see coming down there, the reason why the road was put there, the eastman was put there is because the pavement was there. It was paved. And the reason why the pavement was there is there was an old bukhart trail that used to run from Harmon Loop there to the backside. And on the map, you can see on the map that. Okay, I moved the map a little bit because the reason why that lot was severed, if you can look on the top right-hand corner under notes, it says "The main purpose of the severance of the right-of-way is to serve the back portion of the Harmon Loop Elementary School for future development and other purposes." So this actual forty-foot eastman actually connects Harmon Loop's loop through a road in the back there that eventually comes out again at Route sixteen. And let me put up another aerial photograph that would look at, show it better. And I hope you can see that screen. That blue lot, that blue line, the blue polygon, the blue rectangle, that is the lot that GRTA is looking at, and it's one zero one two six dash one. And that aerial photograph, satellite photograph, we have superimposed, overlaid the lot lines on it so you can see, you know, some references. On the very top of the picture there, towards the right, you see those yellow and white long rectangular things. Those are school buses. And that's where the Department of Public Works keeps their buses. And then right next to it is the GPA facility. And then you can see the gym, and then you can see the baseball field from the, on that recreational area. When I first saw this map and I first saw this lot, I actually thought that it was cut out for the bus satellite station because for safety purposes, buses and cars, if you can, it's always better to spread them out like this in this, in that path in a long lot rather than in a square lot where everything's really congested. So if everybody in that bus satellite station, that DTW bus satellite station, if everybody, if there was a fire in one of the buses, you'd have trouble saving the other buses because they're all bugged together. Secondly, if they were all to try and get out of that one exit, one way in, one way out, you'd have a logjam. This lot, it being long like that and with two exits and two access points to it is a lot better, a safe lot, you know, for the purposes of parking and even parking buses and like that. So, you know, it's really got a bunch of very, very positive element attributes to it that makes it a very good lot for what GRTA intends to use it for. This lot was part of the basic lot of Harmon Elementary School. The question is, who owns the property? The basic lot was under the jurisdiction of the school, but when they divided, when they put that access road in and they left that other side, and then Harmon Elementary School actually sensed in what their area is. So that's the story of where this long parcel came from. And thank you, and I'll be able to hopefully answer any questions that the people might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borja. So is it clear then that the land is under the jurisdiction of the government of Guam and not in any way related to the school? I mean, to.
Yes, it is. There's a land registration case for that. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Joanne Brown, who's joined us. Thank you, Senator. And we will now hear from the Mayor of Dedidu, Mayor Melissa Savares.
Thank you, Speaker. Okay.
Well, just one second. Borja, can you, or can we stop sharing screen right now for temporary? Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you know, I thank Mr. Babauta and Mr. Borja and Mr. Sablan for sharing their testimony. I'm here with, my name is Melissa Savares, Mayor of Dedidu, and I was reviewing the bill number one thirty-one dash thirty-six LS. And the property, you know, I've known the property to be with GDOE. And I'm sharing with my Municipal Planning Council member, Mr. Sir Nicholas Abati, the roadway and how it's very close to JM Guerrero Elementary, previously known as Harmon Loop Road. And Mr. Borja actually brought up a good point and something that is our concern as well. And this bukhart trail is a paved road. It's known as Metgood Street. And he brought up a point that the people short going from Route sixteen to Harmon Loop Road to try to get away from that congested intersection at sixteen and twenty-eight use this bukhart trail. They come from Hegel Loop and VSA Beneventi to shortcut into Metgood or even to the pipeline area to stay away from the traffic area. So this is a very long property. As he mentioned, it's, it's, a lot of residents also traverse it to get even to the sports complex. You know, as you know, we have the tennis courts that are now in place at the sports complex. So of course, you have high volume of traffic. Hopefully, with anything that's built there, you know, will reduce the number of cars and they'll be going to get their vehicles and coming in buses if that should happen. So, you know, my concern is that it is a very heavy traffic, traveled area and as well as, not just by vehicles, but also by foot. The students, there's a bus stop facing routes, Harmon Loop Road, at the end of the pavement, facing Kenny's. And so children who are riding the bus to high school to catch the bus to go to high school or even middle school walk this area from VSA Beneventi, Hegel, and Metgood to go to the bus stop. So it's also a heavy, highly trafficked area for foot traffic. Students going to JM Guerrero from the housing areas in the back also use this roadway. So I don't know if we're going to have to look at putting a sidewalk on the other side so that the foot traffic is on one side of the property, of the roadway, and foot traffic will be separated from those, that vehicle traffic. You know, I just want to congratulate Mr. Babauta for the additional funding that he was able to receive from the Federal Transportation Authority because, as you know, federal funding to Guam is key for us to move forward with many of our projects. And so, you know, I am. Um, and so, you know, I am concerned about the, the property being developed for park and ride. I would like to see where the fence for entrance and exits would be. Um, as well as where the ticket office and especially for, um, where the, uh, the buses will enter if, if this is the property of choice uh, for the mass transit. I just want to clarify with Mr. Borja. Mr. Borja, did you say that DOJ transferred this property out of their inventory as well?
Yes, Mr. Borja, if you could answer that question for us.
No, this is a remainder portion from the basic lot that Department of Education had jurisdiction over. And when the, uh, when the, uh, road, when the bukhart trail, the eastman was severed, this is the leftover portion from that basic lot.
Okay, thank you. And, and, uh, another question that I had, maybe Miss, for Mr. Borja, if you can answer. Were there other properties, uh, other government properties, um, uh, identified for a park and ride other than, uh, this? I mean, I know that's, that's not in the inventory of any other agency?
We looked at several, we looked at several sites. This was not the only site that we looked at. We looked at some sites up in, uh, in, uh, Jigo as well as, uh, uh, indicating the buffer strip. You know, so there were, uh, I, I believe about four or five lot, uh, areas that, uh, we have spoken to with, uh, uh, manager Babata with GRTA.
Okay, another one that we were, um, we were looking at, maybe what about the old transfer station off Batu Lu because it could also face into, uh, both Batu Lu Road and, uh, Marine Corps Drive?
We, we looked at that, but EPA is working with federal EPA, Guam EPA, for federal EPA to build Guam EPA headquarters over there. The, uh, old solid waste transfer station on the corner of Batu Lu Road and Route one.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, um, thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Borja.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Would, uh, Mr. Saniklis like to testify as well?
Yes, I do.
All right, please.
First of all, my name is Joseph Sisniklis. I'm retired with the Guam Department. I live at that Metgood Street area. I have seen traffic, uh, every day that goes through there. Uh, second of all, I don't think that the, the, that road also is wide enough for, uh, the buses to go in and out. Second of all, there's always problems with the, uh, school buses making U-turns within that, uh, traffic light in front of the elementary school. And third of all, uh, like the mayor has stated, foot traffic is always there present during the school hours. And, uh, a lot of people are walking through there, driving through there from Hego and so forth. I would rather see that being used, uh, and to help the school with other sports, uh, facilities rather than a park, park and ride. From what, uh, on my experience that I've seen park and ride is mostly it is centralized in an area that is accessible to the public within the main roads, not, uh, side roads. And this property is basically like a side road from Harmon Loop. And the Harmon Loop is a major, uh, thruway heading to Dedito and heading down to Temuny. And that is the full reasons why that I, I feel that I do not support this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Saniklis. Is, uh, it states here you are, uh, member of the Dedito Municipal Planning Council. Has the Municipal Planning Council, uh, as a group discussed this bill at all?
Well, we didn't, I don't think we have time because we just found this out, uh, just a few days. We had a meeting the other night, but, uh, we, we didn't have it in the agenda. Second of all, uh, previous years back, they tried to build a middle school in that area. And we denied it. Or mid, middle school or high school in that area adjacent to the, uh, uh, sports complex.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, we now have the mayor of Inalahan, Mr. Mayor Chargala.
How many? I, as a board member, of course, I'm supporting. I did not, uh, request to speak here, but I am definitely in support. As a GRTA, uh, board member, I am, uh, speaking on behalf of the body here that we have heard the, uh, the concerns and all the issues that is plaguing the, uh, the mass tra- I mean, the Regional Transit Authority. And I am, I'm just simply going to endorse, uh, all the efforts put forth by the, uh, executive manager and the team of, uh, GRTA. As well as our, uh, board chair, I'm in support of this, uh, bill. Thank, our residents, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we've covered all the testimony of those who are here to testify. We did, uh, the, those who submitted in writing, we have also put up, uh, made available to the senators. Uh, we did receive a fiscal note from BBMR. And it says, "Per GRTA, the agency has federal funding for the design and construction of this facility. However, GRTA does not possess government of Guam property to construct a park and ride facility. As a result, Bill number one thirty-one was introduced. As such, the bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon any funds of the government of Guam." All right, the legal review on this bill is pending. And, uh, I guess I will now allow the sponsor to ask any questions. Senator Turai?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just want to say that, you know, we've looked all over for this particular project. And I guess, uh, the director of land management would testify to that, that, uh, you know, we need the space and the only, the only most appropriate area that we have found out is what, what we're talking about. So, you know, we're pressed with time. And if we don't match up the, the, the requirements of the, the feds in as far as getting the piece of property, then we're gonna lose out on this one. We're gonna lose nine million dollars. But I think that if we go ahead with this project and refine the, uh, the area and to make it, uh, you know, appropriate for, for the buses to go in and out. Uh, maybe DPW can assist us on that one. And maybe Mass Transit can get, uh, uh, more information on just how we can, uh, uh, make the route, uh, more convenient for the buses. Because, um, you know, we've checked all over. And there's not enough space anywhere that we can find other than this one. And like I said, we're pressed with time. If we don't, if we don't manage to get this property, uh, then I'm not, I don't think we're gonna get that nine million dollars and, and, and build the, continue with this program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. Could you, um, clarify, Mr. Borja, if this, or Mr. Babata, whether, uh, is there an island on, on Harmon Loop Road in front of the entrance to this property? So that there's no direct access right now from like a left-hand turn?
There is a median, ma'am, uh, Speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. And so that's why, uh, Mr. Saniklis described the buses making U-turns. Uh, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And then, um, Mr. Babata, can you clarify, how far are you along with the design of this project? Is there... Yeah, could you just describe that to us?
Ma- Madam Speaker, um, thank you. Thank you for, uh, again, this opportunity. Um, Madam Speaker, the, the, um, um, impetus behind the creation of a park and ride facility in Dedito, um, are as follows. Uh, this was brought up initially, you know, honestly by the mayor of Dedito. Secondly, uh, in our research within Guam Regional Transit Authority, we, we've, uh, seen, um, the heavy traffic flow from Jigu, Dedito. Then there comes, uh, the, the military personnel, you know? And, uh, it's, it's been very, very challenging, we've seen with regards to traffic flow. And, um, with that and the benefits that, uh, this, uh, project is going to entail, uh, it, it's huge. So therefore, Madam Speaker and Senators, my team and I got together and put this grant application together. And I'll tell you that putting together a competitive grant application with over two hundred and fifty transit agencies in the United States, who's been doing this for many, many, many years, was very, very challenging because we've never done this before. But I'll tell you, uh, like my, my lead grant writers saying, we were spending seven days a week, twenty-four hours, and they put into grant application together. And with the good Lord's help, we were awarded nine and a half million dollars. It's never been done before in the island of Guam. And, and the benefits, and, and you know, the other thing is, uh, there's a young man from Dedito. His name is Ryan Dahilic. The gentleman is a student at the University of Guam. And really several times he came to me and said, "Mr. Babata, what are you doing to make things better for, for us, the students and other riders out of Dedito to, to have a better type of transit system?" And, and you know, with, with that in mind and all the other good reasons why we need a park and ride facility, uh, we, we, again, we, we committed ourselves, um, I mean, I tell you, Mr. Babata could have sat down and be like the previous administrators, but you know, we didn't do that because we are passionate about...
Mr. Babata, thank you. Let me rephrase my question. I very much support your, um, first of all, I congratulate you on getting the grant. Second of all, I am very much in support of a park and ride facility. You don't have to convince me of the benefits of it. Yeah, I'm, I'm all on board. My only question today is trying to determine whether we are going to give, you know, the government or the legislature is going to allow that use on this particular piece of property. So of course we want to know, you know, what other properties have you considered? Have you done a study to see whether it's really feasible on this property? Because there are some legitimate concerns that have been brought up as to the, you know, the the structure or the, the location of this property. And so I, I just want to know how far along you have, you've got on that. As to this property, only this property, not the project, because I can see the benefits of the project, of course. And those, those are tremendous. And those, that's, congratulations are really in order. For today, yeah, if you could, for my question, if you could just answer, do you have a design for this particular property? Have you taken into consideration the traffic and, and this location in particular in your design?
I can tell you that the number one priority is, is safety. I, I can assure everybody that in putting together a project like this, uh, it, safety is number one. Uh, where we're at with this, Madam Speaker and, and Senators, um, we are in the very, very initial, uh, uh, formulation of, of where we're going to with this. Uh, but as far as the design, uh, nothing's been done. And the reason for that is because the Federal Transit Administration will not allow GRTA to spend a single penny of this money unless the property belongs to GRTA. So with respect to your question, uh, very little has been done with regards to design. But on the other hand, I want to assure the, the people of Guam that, um, uh, the mode of, uh, mindset, Guam Regional Transit Authority, safety is number one. So, you know, when this park and ride facility is put together, I can assure you that there will be a safety analysis conducted. And, and all of that to make sure that the in and out, uh, uh, transportation will be safe and sound, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then can you also speak to, um, how pressed for time are you?
Ma'am, um, we, uh, have four years to get this project going and done. Four years. And, uh, you know, with the track record of Governor Guam, uh, I, I mean, uh, this is my first time working for Governor Guam. And it has been very, very challenging, but with persistence and commitment, uh, we're gonna get this done in four years, uh, uh, unless I'm held back. But, uh, I'm committed to this and my board, uh, with the leadership of Chairman Sablon and, uh, Mayor Chargalas, um, we're determined to get this thing done because it, the, the benefits are huge. And I'm sorry to say that, um, uh, I mean, and we've looked at other properties. Mr. Borja, thank you very much, sir, because you have done a, a lot of good work with us on identifying properties. And, and this is the most logical that we can find for a park and ride facility at this time, uh, Madam Speaker.
Okay, Mr. Borja, can I ask you, I know that you assisted EPA in, uh, um, with finding the lot that they are going to use. That was, uh, suggested by one of the municipal planning council members of Dedito. What, um, were, what other lots did you consider and why were they ruled out? If you could just very briefly tell us how many were considered and why they were ruled out?
Actually, the lot that we, we identified as a possible site, actually, it was GRTA actually that, you know, said, "This is good, this is bad, uh, you know, we can work with this one or not work with this one." You know, our inventory of available land for projects such as these are very, very, uh, small. And as a matter of fact, we, uh, look at this one. This one's actually a leftover piece. It wasn't a, uh, you know, it wasn't a big lot. This just happened to be a leftover piece from the, uh, from the severance that they did on there. Uh, but the, the location and, uh, um, all those other elements as to whether this lot would be good for GRTA, it was basically a GRTA's call. Uh, but we looked at the, at one site is up there in Jigo near the, uh, game facility, near the Jigo Gym that we looked up, uh, we looked at that site, uh, we looked at, uh, of course, Batu Lu Road. And we looked over there by Route three, uh, on the way up to NCS. But, uh, um, by and large, this was the one that GRTA, uh, settled suited to their project.
Has the, um, Batu Lu Road property been designated for EPA, uh, formally or not yet?
No, that would probably have to go through the, uh, to the legislature and a bill similar to this. Uh, because that site was the former, uh, solid waste transfer station, which was under the jurisdiction of, uh, of, uh, DPW at one time. And, uh, so no, it hasn't been formally officially designated as that.
All right. Is this, is, has any other government agency expressed an interest in this particular piece of property subject to this bill?
Not, not that I know of, you know. I thought maybe DPW might be interested for their, uh, bus satellite station, even though they have a nice square lot on that site. Uh, you know, like I said, I felt that streaming out the parking, uh, would be safer in case of, uh, vehicle fire rather than bugged up there in the middle. But, uh, not that I know of, uh, no other agency. The other two, uh, entities that might be interested in it, of course, would be the school. The school has already severed there. The school has already fenced in their area. Uh, with the acreage that Harmon Loop or JM Guerrero has now, they could actually build another school on that site. Uh, another school of the same size, uh, that they have there. And, uh, as a matter of fact, I believe they have the recreational facility, uh, walking track, I think, uh, uh, on that, uh, on that property. So, um, yeah, that, so that's how we looked at it.
Okay. And, um, I guess finally, so Mr. Babata, yeah, I'm, I want to support your project. I am concerned, uh, that if, you know, we have not heard from the municipal planning council of Dedito. Normally, that's part of the process here that we, we ask them for their input before we will approve any, you know, transfers of land. So I'm just going to put that, uh, to you to, that might be something we need. All right? And, uh, right now I'm gonna, uh, open it up to the co-sponsor of the bill, Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I recall, Mr. Borja, that when we had some preliminary meetings with you and, um, Guam Regional Transit Authority, there were very little properties available, um, for such a project, as I recall. And I also recall that, that the, in, in the discussion about properties that were available, that, um, at least two others were ruled out as not being feasible because of the top of, uh, to... because of the top of, uh, topographical challenges and also the access to the main thoroughfare. Um and, and that is why um, this site was not only the most feasible because of its proximity to main trans, the, the main thoroughfares, but also uh the fact that it is in a very densely populated area. And in terms of a, a park and ride, that, you know, that was one of the reasons that um, I know in working with Senator Turlahi and uh, and with Director Babata, that was one of the um, that was one of the, the factors that, that narrowed in this particular property. In addition to the fact that this property is such an odd-shaped property that its uses are, are also, you know, not, not very broad. But it was, I thought that, that it was, it was something that could be suitable for a park and ride as the, the group was um, you know, having its working meetings and deliberating on, on what was possible. Um, Mr. Babata, I understand that, that there is design money available, right? About two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that has been available since 2011. So, so part of the, part of the issue is that the chicken before the, uh, the egg before the chicken. Um, in order to even begin to design, you have to have a title to a property, uh as I understand, right? That's correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Right. So as soon as, as soon as GRTA is in, has um the property in its, in its name, titled to GRTA, then that design money is made available um right away for you to proceed, right?
That's correct, Madam, uh Senator.
You know, I, I appreciate um Mayor Savares and Mr. Siniklas, your, your thoughts about how that use, that, that road is currently used and, and the foot traffic and, and all of that, but I, I believe that that was one thing that was, seemed to be an attractive part of, of putting a, a park and ride. Um, its proximity to foot traffic and people being able to access it conveniently uh and make use of it, you know, and, and so while, while I see your concern for safety, I, I also, I also believe that that is one reason why it would make it more conducive and successful as opposed to a park and ride that is more Harlem Tano or somewhere where someone would really have to walk very far to get to the, the buses or drive a distance to get to the buses. So um, I believe with design, that's really, that's really the key element here is, is how can you within uh um, you know, a densely populated area, heavily trafficked, how do you design something so that it is safe and functional? Which is what many cities deal with right now that have park and ride facilities. None of them are set aside or don't have the same challenges. So um, I just wanted to comment on that because I believe that, that, you know, many of the concerns here that are brought up as oppositions to this measure were in fact the same concerns that were hashed out that made the, 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 not only the authors of this bill, but the Guam Regional Transit Authority and, and um land management of the opinion that this was a suitable site, you know, so all those things were factored in. Um, of course, the, the, the design is optimal, but, but again, you can't even begin with the design until you have the, the title. So that's, that's sort of the, the predicament that um Mr. Babata finds himself in. You know, he would love to demonstrate, but he, he can't demonstrate and spend money um because it's, it's, it's not allowed under the, the terms of the federal uh grant. So, you know, I just want to point that out, but um, I think certainly this area is, would be a, a very a very smart area to encourage people to make use of a brand new concept like park and ride in Guam. Just because it is so accessible to shopping areas, to um shopping areas, businesses, schools, and also, you know, major sports areas. So it, it um, it has all the elements to make it uh sensible. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll reserve any further comments.
Thank you, Senator. I'll call Senator Ada.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Uh, Mr. Babata or Mr. Sablon, perhaps you can answer my questions? Um, and I'll leave it up to either one of you. Would uh, is the nine point five million dollars going to be entirety, entirety for the, the park and ride? Or what's the proportion going to go to park and ride and what will be for the buses?
Mr. Chairman, I can go ahead and take this question, sir. Um, Senator Ada, thank you for, thank you for the question. Uh, let me just uh briefly uh provide a, a, a quick overview of the uh, the uh grant application. Of these nine point five million dollars, about um, about seven million dollars would be for the procurement of, of buses. Uh, we're also going to be procuring eight uh vehicles, uh electric cars, uh, uh, but maybe two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and the essence, and, and in addition to that, we're also going to be, be purchasing a, a technology transportation management system and the construction of a, a charging station. The construction of a charging station would be about four hundred thousand dollars, thereabouts. And we have uh fundings reserved for uh the state administration. I don't have the entirety of the grant proposal right now, but that's a quick uh, kind of like one down of the, the, the breakdown of the cost, but you know, with, with the, with the TMS, the Transportation Management System and the electric cars, what it is, is that this will be a concept where like Uber, if any of you have uh, uh, wrote an Uber or use Uber to, to uh get your transportation, you download the app, you schedule your ride, and uh a car will go out and pick you up. Well, this is going to be part of that, where riders can download their app, schedule their rides, and then they, they can either drive over to the park and ride, or they can ask for a car to go and pick them up at their residence. And from their residence, they get, they get picked up and they get dropped off at the park and ride. So they don't have to uh drive their car over to the park and ride. And, and from there, they can get on the bus and go to University of Guam. So, so that, that is uh, in terms of safety, that would be a, a plus in terms of addressing the safety uh, uh concerns of uh the mayor and Mrs. Siniklas. Is that um, is that people will be afforded an opportunity to uh, to use the electric cars to get them picked, get themselves picked up to go to the park and ride. Uh so, so Senator Ada, um, uh, yeah, so again, we have money set aside to procure buses, to buy cars, to build charging stations, to procure the um, the uh Transportation Management System. And all of that will be under the umbrella of the nine point five million dollars. And like I said before, you know, not a single penny uh can, can, can be spent until we have a piece of property.
Okay, thank you. So the, so we're looking about perhaps maybe one point eight million dollars to construct the park and ride facility then, right? And I was just getting a little bit of estimate here because you're looking at seven million on buses. Uh, with this plan, and you know, the concern was brought up about the, the median that's there in the middle of the road. Are you also looking at proposing putting a traffic light at that intersection where the entrance to the, the uh park and ride will be located?
Sure, I'm, I'm quite sure that, you know, in working with Guam Highway, uh with DPW, that will be a, a, a very important factor in making sure that, you know, the uh, the um, the park and ride facility is safe for the buses to, to leave and come back at, you know. But on the other hand, there are two uh, two accesses that are uh possible from the rear and also from the front. So I'm quite sure that you're working with the, the Guam Highway folks at DPW that um, there may be a need to put a traffic light there. We, we, there may be a need to uh, to make some uh modifications to the median in the, in the middle, you know, so I, I have to work with the safety folks to address that concern.
Okay, so would there be any leeway to perhaps maybe um go from seven million dollars on buses to six million dollars to increase the, the cost for the park and ride facility and the, the traffic light? Should a traffic light be built there or, you know, just to address the, the issues of the concerns of the residents in the area? Being that I don't think they would want buses tra-traversing on the, on the backside of the property, knowing that I think that's a a residential, there's a lot of residential homes in that area.
Sure, uh definitely, uh we have an opportunity to uh communicate with um the Federal Transit Administration. And we can uh, uh provide uh, uh requests to modify the grant proposal uh to include uh, you know, uh addressing the, the uh concerns with regards to safety, traffic light or, or anything else, you know, but, but yes, there's a a, a, a possibility that we can, you know, communicate with the Federal Transit Administration to make commitments and maybe reduce the amount for uh, you know, with the cost of buses or whatever, and uh we can, you know, work that out. I'm quite sure that we can work that out with FTA.
Oh, okay. That's great to know. So that, you know, like I said, the concerns of the residents in the area and the traffic in the front area. All right, Madam Speaker, that's the only, the question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Telatitigui, you're recognized.
So just, Madam Speaker, good afternoon to everyone who's here. Um, Celestine, first I want to say, you know, thank you for sticking, sticking around at GRTA. I know you wanted to retire, but uh you're doing such a great job there. And I, I know that the governor didn't want to let you go, so um I want to thank you for continuing to serve the people of Guam in this capacity because uh GRT is, has been neglected, uh must admit, they have been neglected for a while. So I appreciate all you're doing. You know, my only concern, Celestine, really is, is just the uh, you know, the collaboration with uh the Municipal Council of Dedidu. Um, even before this uh grant was going in or while it was being processed, the waiting time, um, it would have been a great opportunity uh once that uh you and Mr. Borha had, had finally finalized it to, to meet the municipal council. And I think Senator Ada had some great ideas to probably um, address some of their concerns um by this traffic light and, and readjusting the grant. Um, so I think it could be a win-win situation, uh but it, that would only happen if, if you were to meet with the municipal council personally yourself. And because like what you're doing to us today, you know, uh, safety is the greatest concern that you have. And I think that uh, the municipal coun- uh council as well as the people of Dedidu want to see that uh you're taking that into full consideration with regards to safety. Um, I, I just have a couple of questions with regards, most of it was asked uh by questions, but Celestine, with regards to the, um, when you said four years, uh is that four years to start the project that you have with this grant to start it within four years? Or the completion to be done in four years?
The uh, the original um plan, uh Senator um, uh, Titigui is to um to complete the project in four years. But on the other hand, you know, um, in, in communicating with the Federal Transit Administration, uh because of perhaps maybe some obstacles along the way, you know, good reasons, uh, they, they, they're always willing to help us in that regard, you know, but, but our goal is to, to try and get this um project going and completed because, you know, I think it's surely needed by the people of Guam. Especially up at the Gigu and the Dedidu area, and then you had the military folks, you know. But, but going back to your question real quickly about communicating with the Municipal Planning Council, I want you to know and, and Madam Speaker and the Senators, that I spent, I spent some time talking to the mayor of Dedidu. And you know, honestly, I was promised that we will have, GRTA will have the old, the former flea market. But somehow, as, as things begin to materialize, and I've got monies available in the beginning to address that need, that the mayor had brought up to me, later on, they changed their minds. So that's how we arrived. We're going to Joe Borha, who's been very helpful, to begin looking for other pieces of property. Because when we put this application together, we stated that we already have a piece of property, and that's bearing in mind what the mayor had committed to me. So after she negated from that, then I went to Joe and Joe and I and Senator Turlahi and Senator Torres. Then we started working with Joe and we arrived at this property. So yes, ma'am, I've communicated with the Dedidu mayor and uh I asked to meet with the council, but they refused to allow me to meet with them. So.
Wow.
I'm curious, I'm passionate about this project.
Right. I, I, I understand, Celestine, and um.
And that's one of the reasons why I have, that's one of the reasons why I submitted my resignation three times already.
Yeah. You know, Celestine, um, that's, you mentioned the old flea market.
Correct, ma'am.
Who knows where that is? You mean, you actually had an opportunity to use that area, which is, is, I think is large enough and people can park their cars. There's a lot of room there. Um, what was the reasoning for them not using uh, or, or Mayor Savares, can you answer that question, please? Um, if the opportunity to use the old flea market was available, I mean, it's obvious they have, that's probably less money to be using for, you know, laying down the uh asphalt or cement in the parking area. It's already completed. Uh, what was the, the uh pushback on that?
Okay, let me, and let me explain. Yes, we, we identified, but you know, of course, the Municipal Planning Council, we were, we also, that's a revenue generating facility area for us as well. Uh, ever since we, when we had the flea market there, we generate revenue. It is part of the buffer strip that allows us to generate revenue. As a matter of fact, um, uh Senator Titigui, we even have a uh, there's a, a portion of it that's going to be leased for the TriVision. So one of the things is, yes, we were willing to do, because we need funding to also repair our roads. As you know, there's no local funding to repair secondary and traditional roads. And so what we wanted to do was come into partnership, but we didn't realize that they had to own the property. And so when it came time to, uh, when, when Mr. Babata had brought up that they needed to have ownership of the property, that's when it was uh brought up that, you know, we don't want to give up the property. We, we were looking for ways to generate, we still generate funding through there uh through portions of the lease. Like I said, TriVision is in the process of leasing a portion of it to put their, their media uh billboard up there. Um, and so, you know, the law, the public, I mean, the ownership of the Municipal Planning Council is for revenue generating. So that's why in the past, you know, when we talked, when we had relocated the flea market to the farmers' co-op and we have that partnership there, we still look for revenue generating opportunities for us, especially to make repairs uh within the village. And so we were going to, we were looking at the party and it was always brought up, this would be a perfect place because it was already, we have an area to go in and out, but when they said that they had to own the property and have the property under the, the mass transit, that's when, you know, it, there was a little bit of um uh, you know, the, the council actually refrained. They said it, we can't, we don't want to give up the, we can't give up the property because it's generating, it generates revenue for us. So, and yes, I, you know, I spoke, even prior to Mr. Babata, I had talked to uh Mr. Agus, um, um, the previous general manager for Abada Park and Ride. And so, you know, I thank Mr. Babata, like I said, they were aggressively seeking grants. And so of course, it's not that we, we didn't want them to be a part of that, but you know, we didn't want our council, actually, I don't make the final decision. Remember everything, we vote on things at the, at the Municipal Planning Council uh level. And it was my uh counsel that said, we can't give up this property because we also want to, we need to generate revenue to make repairs on our secondary roads and traditional roads. A lot of our fifty-year-old roads are, have potholes and, and there's no local funding to assist us in making those repairs.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor Savares. Um, we can probably talk about roads at another time, but I mean, I've been advocating for funding for roads and we have in our budget bill, provided uh funding for roads for the villages and uh for secondary roads. So for, to say that there's no money, I, I, I can't swallow that.
The money goes to DPW, ma'am, and of course, a- across the board, they equally divided three roads per village.
Right. So there is some funding going there, but granted, you're right, there's not enough uh funding for those roads and I appreciate you, you, you know, trying to find a way to make that happen for your village of Dedidu. However, um, this also is very beneficial to the people and, and also the surrounding villages in your area uh by utilizing um the flea mar, uh the old flea market area. This, this has helped for the people of Guam. Um, I'm not sure about TriVision, how your intentions to use something like that, uh, that's, that's news. I'm not sure about TriVision, how your intentions to use something like that, that's, that's news, but the one that's disturbing is the fact that you won't allow the, or not you, but the municipal council needs to meet with Mr. Babata. And for them not to wanting to meet with him, there's no collaboration, and I believe that there should be some. I, I hope you can arrange that. Melissa, I know you're, you're very good at getting people together, so I hope this can be done very soon, that Celestine can, can speak to them and talked about the, the area that's proposed in this legislation, and maybe there can be, like I said, a win-win. The other question I have with regards to is there anything, Celestine, Mr. Babata, anything in the grant that requires a certain amount of square footage that for this funding, or that's totally up to you?
No, ma'am, there is no requirement with regards to specifics acreage of space in that regard.
Okay, and the, the last thing, I think we already, somebody already spoke about it, but I think it's just as important, is the study. The impact study of the surrounding areas in which a park and ride facility is placed on, there should be some type of impact study. Has that been done yet, Mr. Babata?
No, ma'am, not yet, but again, in, in looking at the space, in looking at, you know, the, the technology that we're going to be using, plus the electric cars, we know that perhaps maybe there's a need for a larger number of parking spaces, but with the technology and the electric cars, where people will be able to download the app or call GRTA Transit Management Center and schedule their rides to be picked up at their homes, you know, and can drop, get dropped off, then we can begin to look at reducing the volume of cars being parked over at the park and bike facility. So, and, and if there's a need for us to increase the number of cars to be transporting people back and forth to their residence, to the park bike facility, in our future grant applications with the federal transit administration, we can include that in our grant proposals.
Okay.
Because we have, every year, we have, right now, every year, we have one point nine million dollars in, in recurring formula grants from the Federal Transit Administration. Within that grant, we can sit down and, and, and put together proposals that will effectively allow us to make our transit system much better.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Babata, and I think a, a, a study would be important here, an impact study. And a lot of questions will be answered, then, as well as, you know, what is data, or just the study alone can tell us a lot more. And I appreciate it, thank you so much for your time, and your service too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titikwe. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate all the information that's been provided. You know, if this lot is workable for mass transit, I think that's wonderful, but, but as some of our other colleagues have mentioned, I think they're going to need to address how they can minimize impact to the neighboring residential community, because certainly you have a school at one end, and of course, you have the DPW bus station at the other end, and then the residents in the back. I, I don't think we can argue that there isn't a need for such a facility, and certainly, while we take for granted, we get in our cars every day, there are many people in our that don't have vehicles or are not able to drive, or maybe for health reasons, prefer not to drive for their own safety. So, so I think we can all say there's definitely a need for the facility, but I think it's how can we, how can, how can we mass transit address where there's accessibility to and from, and it doesn't add any additional heavy burden on the residential community or the access road that currently exists between the school and between the DPW facility. If those concerns can be addressed, I think we understand, certainly, Mr. Borja elaborated about, you know, there's only so much government land inventory, and also the location that's, you know, located to an accessible area for, for the roadway that's going through there. So I, I understand all that, I appreciate it, I certainly hope they're able to move forward with the project, but definitely, I think in the planning process, they're going to need to address how are they going to minimize adverse impact to the the residential community that's located behind this particular property. Other than that, Madam Speaker, I have no questions. Thank you.
Madam Speaker?
There may be some technical difficulties, and Speaker will be logging back in, if we can just hang on for one minute. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Madam Speaker.
Offa Day, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Senator Pito, can you hear me? Okay, sorry, yeah, my, my internet, for some reason, is going on and off, but I have a couple more questions if I could ask. Mayor Savares, what other property does, is within the mayor, and was this, is within the jurisdiction of the mayor of Dedido right now, besides the Dedido flea market, or the old flea market?
Currently, we have the, the, the old fire and police station, which is the Dedido Municipal Building.
Main entrance.
Yeah, the main entrance into Iglesia Circle. And so what we were looking at is also, I wanted to find out from Mr. Borja if he ever, that buffer strip in front of ERC, Kay's Enterprise, that area, if they ever researched, because Public Parks and Recreation actually has a hard time maintaining that facility. And so you would have, you can have an entrance coming into Loretta Street, into Buena Vista, and then out through Iglesia Circle without any problems. It's already a flat area, all they need to do is pave it and have your entrance and exits in that area, especially if we're targeting the people from Jiggo and Anderson, because they come in from the north and exit through the south.
So we'll put that on, well, for the Director of Land Management and the, and the Mass Transit Manager to consider. But could I ask you, Mayor, what is your income from the old flea market right now?
Well, pre-COVID, Senator was six, a little over six thousand dollars a month. But now, with post-COVID, we're not quite making fifteen, two thousand, depending on how many vendors, because our vendors were still limited based on the executive order on how, what type of vendors we can have. So, on a monthly basis, we're not quite hitting two thousand, we're roughly on a given month, maybe fifteen to sixteen hundred a month, and then now we have food truck Tuesdays. That gives us an additional three, four hundred dollars a month as well. So, based on, on the projected, the income that we're currently getting post-COVID, we're getting about two thousand a month.
All right.
Which goes back out to the community.
Okay, what, how much are you expecting from TriStar?
TriStar, we're still working out with Land Management and their, the lease, because the lease agreement is managed by Department of Land Management, and so we're looking at, because it's a twenty by twenty space, roughly about maybe six, a little over six, five thousand a year. It's a very small space.
Did you say five thousand per year?
Roughly, approximately.
Okay, and so, Mr. Borja, yeah, Director, can you tell me, is for the mass transit project on the lot in the bill, will any rezoning be required, or will it be exempt from anything like that?
No, I, I don't really know what the zoning on that is, other than it is a government land, and it is a school. And zoning a school, a, a land for schools is a relatively, a new thing. I, I wanted to put up a, there might be a rezoning issue on it, but there is a, you know, what Mayor Savares was bringing up, the biggest revenue lead that the Dedido has, it's, you know, she's talking about the vendors that rent pays for the old flea market, but by law, that property was given to Dedido, the buffer strip on that side of the street. And each of those private businesses were allowed to lease the portion in front of them, either for parking or for beautification. And throughout the years, money has been received by the government for, from those businesses, from some of them. But that, I don't believe that has ever gotten to the mayor. And the split is supposed to be two-thirds goes to Dedido, and one-third goes to Jiggo. And I don't believe the mayor, she's never told me she receives any money on it. Pre-COVID, we looked at the entire area, we were working with the mayor to collect some of the bad rent that some of those companies have, and I believe one company did bring their account current, but I don't believe the mayor received, received that money in hand. More importantly, if there are some corporations that are actually using that, that are not paying, you know, for that, so throughout the years, although the mayor and the planning council of Dedido, and this is probably why they don't want to give up ownership on that piece, because it does have the potential of generating revenue, but I don't know if Jiggo and Dedido have ever seen the fruits of that of that public law for them.
All right, thank you. We'll follow up on that. And can I ask if, if no zoning, rezoning is required, and you know, that type of process, is there any way that any of you sees that the landowners of the area are going to be notified in this process? So, let's say, if this bill goes forward, I think that you know, it gives them an opportunity, but not a real direct notice of it. And then, it would, I don't know, Mr. Babata, do you foresee that, like getting their, type, any other type of public input that is necessary for the grant, or not, not, not really? Mr. Babata? Or, or Mr. Borja, did I interview, see any other opportunity for public input after, after this bill is approved?
Not, not that I know. But, but in general, in that area, and I asked to put up a picture of the area, because there are other developments in that area also concerning access. And at the end of that road, not, not, not the road we're talking about, but at the end of that pipeline road, it's St. Paul. And also in that area is where Island is planning on building. And they did have a problem in the original bill introduced, I believe, by Senator San Augustine, I think, in the previous legislature. They had a problem with access, and that's why that, that bill died in that previous legislature. I think it was the thirty-fourth, or maybe even the thirty-third legislature that, that it died in there. Island has perfected their application for access in that area. Getting access, I believe, from the military, and also getting access from, I believe, buying a private property in that area, as well as a resolution from the municipal planning council, supporting that island project, you know, for that area. So that's, you know, and like I said, if I could put up the picture, there's, there's a lot happening around that area, and I don't mean identity and like that, and there are some private landowners in it, so.
Yes, please, put your picture up and talk us through that.
So here we go, so, so this weird-shaped lot here with that bend, this area, we hope you can see the cursor. This is the sports complex, and then this is the, the M. Guerrero, and this is the, the road that we're talking about, the lot that we're talking about. Now, you can see that it, it connects to our other access roads, one here, and then this goes to that residential area, I believe it's Hegal Loop, if I'm not mistaken, I may, on that. But this line that you see here, this white line that crosses Route Sixteen down here, is a line that goes all the way up. You know what that is? That's the pipeline, that's the military pipeline. And then goes there. And then to the right of the military pipeline, where you see these brown rectangles, these are Tomorrowland Trust agricultural leases. These are, these are, this is a big Tomorrowland Trust property. Half this was. The sports complex originally was a Tomorrowland Trust property, but this is a Tomorrowland Trust agricultural area. All the other houses and things that you see there are private, private areas. The area that we call, commonly call Old Flea Market, or we call it here, Land Management, the Buffer Strip, there's actually two Buffer Sticks. This gray area that you see up here, that's the actual Old Flea Market, or and part of the Buffer Strip. This is actually only one quarter of the Buffer Strip. The Buffer Strip extends from here, from here all the way up to the last service station, I believe it's a mobile service station on your right-hand side, right before you get to, to Home Center. The Dedido Home Depot. But, so, so this area over here, all of these, on this side of the street, these companies, private companies are using that Buffer Strip either for beautification or for parking for the facility in that area, and they're supposed to be paying rent to the Dedido Mayor's Council, two-thirds and one-third to Jiggo. On the other side of the street, where the State Market, that's the, that's the other side of the street that the mayor was, was talking about. And then, of course, further up, here's where you have the, the new flea market and the new co-op. And, and this is the, so you have this road here, and you have some green area here, but this is, this is private property. Now, when they realigned Harmon Loop Road, when they, when they realigned it, making the straight road wide and everything, there was a bunch of slivers left alongside of here. Notably, in front of Stan Brothers, S.A.N.G. And that property is government property, but it's being used for parking by the, by the private company. Properties like that and slivers like that, my personal recommendation, is send it to the adjoining landowner. Because that's really the only landowner that can use it, or lease it, you know, on that, but it, it's, it's being underutilized now by the government, and it's being overutilized by private parties on there. There's also another situation over here by Costaless Parking Lot, it has a weird triangle. If you ever pass by there, and you see the Costaless Parking Lot, and the reason for that is next to it is private property. So there is a subdivision back here, about two hundred homes, that is serviced by that road, which is a really illegal eastbound passage to private property. So when they realign, when they realign Harmon Loop, it created some, you know, situations. I, I think that needs to be addressed, because if, if that landowner was really hard about it, hard about it, he could potentially close that road, you know, and throw tension to disarray. And then, of course, the other part here is that a private company using government land has a parking for their employees, you know, or whatever, and, you know, the government should get, Dedido should get some benefit out of there, as the whole community for that. But there are situations here that need addressing, and it can only be done really by legislation. Land management cannot do it, you know, just the legislature that has the authority and prerogatives to be able to do that, if they so want. So this is the road, this road here is actually the pipeline, this is what you call the pipeline road. It extends all the way to, up to Tijan, across to Thorntu. It extends all the way to, up to Tijan, across to Thautu, up to Sinahanya, up to Agani Heights, and all the way up to PD to the people. And this, of course, goes all the way up to Anderson Air Force Base and to the new base on it. But this space in here really, at one time, was government property.
Mr. Borja, are you saying that the pipeline road presents a challenge for GRTA to have true in and out access from that back entrance?
No, because they can go through, they can go through these other roads. Of course, it goes through, like I said, residential area, but they're not locked in on that backside.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone have questions on this picture before I ask one final question? But anyone on the picture?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask a question, it's not necessarily related, but since Mr. Borja was going over that. Out of curiosity, what, is that privately owned, that big lot there on the left behind the Costu Les there that is vacant? Just out of curiosity, because I've really looked at an aerial view of this area.
That is private property.
Oh, okay, because that's like one of the few open areas there probably for future development. And one other point, I assume that the, I mean, isn't the, the location there where the field is still Tomorrowland Trust property? Aren't they supposed to be paying a lease to Tomorrowland Trust?
Which one, the sports field?
Yeah, the sports field.
No, I believe that was given to the jurisdiction of the Guam Football Association.
Really? When was that? Because when I was reviewing the land trust leases, what, 10, 11 years ago? They were all under the Tomorrowland Trust, and they had to pay, you know, they had a nominal amount, but they were having to pay, you know, an annual fee to the Tomorrowland Trust for that.
Some of this is still under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Rec.
Well, I just recall records of it under Tomorrowland Trust, so interesting, but, oh, well, I guess we could look at that another day.
All right, Mr., thank you. Any other questions on the map? Who's that, Senator Torres?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was me.
Oh, Senator Torres, okay, please.
Okay, thank you. Joe, I remember this pipeline when I was in my younger years. Because I have an aunt who used to live on the pipeline in Harmon that you're looking at. And I, and I haven't been there in, gosh, since 19, forgotten. But if I'm not mistaken, the pipeline is like the divider, you can't even cross, you know, cars coming one way. If you're going the other way, you know, you're on the other side of the pipe. So I'm looking at the area in which the proposed park and ride area right here, okay, further down. If you go all the way, no, not that way, yeah, right to the pipeline. There's access right there, and there's not, doesn't look like that many houses, maybe this is an old Google Earth map. But they can still go through the pipeline and exit out where St. Paul's is at, right?
I think maybe Mr. Nikolas can answer that better. I believe this was actually returned federal access lands. And I believe split up among the Nikolas family, I believe.
Joe, that, that pipeline is federal property, it's 50 feet wide. And the federal government can always close it anytime.
Yes, it is.
And the pipelines are buried.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's open road, then there is, so right now, anybody using that road, that long pipeline road. They're accessing federal property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, but it's not blocked, in other words, people can still use it.
They still use it on a daily basis to get away from traffic, Senator.
Okay, so, I mean, because if you, if you look at that, it might be an option, keeping it from, you know, the other highly populated areas. Okay, thank you, just looking at that, wondering about, thank you so much.
Thank you. I have one further question, yeah, thank you. This is for Mr. Babalta. Does your grant allow you to lease property instead of outright owning it? Is it possible that you lease it for a long term and then build this facility on it?
No, ma'am, and the reason for that is because they, the Federal Transit Administration had experienced in the past. That where they've given out monies to build facilities, you know, and then later on, a new administration shows up and there it is. They decide to go and use that building that was built with FTA funds for other purposes. And a good example of that is the one down at the Gani Muir's office. That used to be a mass transit facility, and then it was taken away from, from mass transit. So they're very, very strict in regards to using Federal Transit Administration funds to build facilities.
If you could send me what, the page of the grant or whatever the rules are, that rule that talks about. The, you know, your type of ownership of the property, so we could put that also in the committee report, I would have been appreciative. All right, so I guess all the senators have asked questions, I'm gonna go back to Senator Pito Turahi, the sponsor of the bill to close.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, but I've listened to all the concerns, so we'll talk about it later on. And I'll get together with the manager of Mass Transit and also Mr. Laura. And continue to search for another location just in case. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Municipal Planning Council, yes, Senator Torres.
Yeah, I just, I just want to comment that in, considering all the points that were raised today. One thing about this bill that I think is advantageous to everybody's concerns is that it has a reversionary clause in it. In other words, you know, Mr. Babalta was very clear about, about his challenge of availing of these funds. And pushing it, the completion of this project to the timeline, which is four years, you know, to construct using those grant monies. And so if you think about, you know, the best case scenario, right? If you were to allow someone to avail of $9 million in grant money. And to go full throttle and try to construct everything, design and construct within a four-year period. You know, the, I mean, that is great incentive, right, in what we're doing with him. The, the, the advantageous part to the government is that there's no risk of permanently losing this property to GRTA because of the reversionary. In other words, if, if, if for some reason they are not able to complete the project, then it, the land goes back to the government. So in that regard, I think that, you know, it's a very conservative way to try to accommodate a project. And the use of monies, like our chairman said, you know, $9 million is nothing that we want to scoff at if we have the ability to make it go. So I just wanted to point out that the safety valve with the reversionary is there, unlike many leases that are 99 years. And you really have no control over it, whereas this one, it's giving Mr. Babalta the ability to do something, but a very, very strict timeline. And then if he, if for some reason it doesn't go through, no harm, the land comes back to the government in full title. So I just wanted to point that out, you know, as we contemplate this. Because I believe everybody tried to exhaust localities, and this was the most reasonable. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. All right, anyone else? If not, all right. There being no additional individuals to present testimony, the committee will consider Bill 131-LS duly heard. And I want to thank all of you for being here and helping us in this process, all of you who participated. The public hearing is now adjourned, the time is 3:41 PM, Cito Smasi.